Meeting is called to order at 7:02 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of October 22nd, 2019 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the board approve the following consent agenda as written on your agenda? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. Treasurers' report. May I have a motion that the treasurer's... Motion in a second, please, that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending July 31st, 2019 be approved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, special reports.
We have a special report this evening. I'll invite Brandon Fox, our security preparedness manager, and Alan McNiff, director of facilities up, and they're going to provide an overview of the Armada security audit report. For the public to know, there was a workshop a couple of weeks ago where Brandon and Alan provided a very in-depth look on the security report, and this is an opportunity for the full board and the community to also see sort of a snapshot of that report we spent a lot of time with on last year. I'll turn it over to Alan and Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Poblen, appreciate that. You guys hear me okay here? There's better. Yes, thanks, thank you for having Brandon, my partner and I, to go through the security audit that was conducted last year. Briefly, let me allow you to go through the agenda here. So, we're going to go through an introduction of how and why we had the audit completed, and then we're going to go through the overview of the security risk assessment report that was provided from Armada, the consultant that we had hired. We'll review the top five priorities from that report. We'll talk about current progress to date and future planning and development. So, just before I get into the RFP process for solicitation of Armada, just want to talk about the overview of security audits that we've done in the past. Traditionally, the district has conducted them every five years or so, and it's basically to gauge, how are we trending? How are our policies? How are our procedures? Our infrastructure? How does that relate to current environment conditions? And so forth. So, it's a good check to see what should we be improving upon, what we currently have in place. So, with that being said, our last audit was done in 2013, and at that time, we made changes to our plans, right? We created a new district-wide safety plan, building emergency response plans, we did other different, various different procedures, as well as capital project improvements. As you know, most of the elementary schools, they received different vestibule entrances, we changed our door configurations, we looked at all of those different aspects at that time. So, now we've gone through that, now we're at five years again. In 2018, we started looking at this. We needed to want to take another look at, how are we doing? How does that look? So, we went through the process of sending out requests for proposals, and we received five responses back. That was October of last year, and we ultimately ended up selecting a company by the name of Armada Limited. They are out of Ohio. Their work includes, obviously, K-12 pieces, higher education municipalities, as well as federal government work. So, they had a broad range of experience, and one of the things that we kind of liked about them is they're outside of New York State, they might have a different look, perspective, than what a New York State agency might have. So, and we liked their track record of the reporting that they did and the methodology in which they do it. So, the study was conducted from November of last year all the way up until March, and they did an evaluation that was based on a lot of different things, which included, obviously, written documents such as our policies, our procedures, our plans, our building emergency response plans. They conducted site visits, they had many different interviews with different stakeholders throughout the district, including ourselves here at the table here, to talk about, well, what's our practices? How are those things being implemented? And get into the nitty-gritty, if you will, about various different things, security cameras and so on and so forth. So, they did all of that, they obviously did onsite evaluation of our facilities, and actually, you know, also did the overlap of what are evening activities? How does that look? So, they had a pretty good comprehensive piece of that. And they also sent out a survey to our parents and our staff to get some take on their thoughts on how we were doing too. So, they had a pretty good comprehensive evaluation, at least from my perspective and some others here. So, the final report was completed and provided to us in March of 2019, here obviously this year. So, during the course of the summer, we started to look at various different aspects of the report, and we'll get into those five priorities a little bit later, but obviously, we'll get into what we've done to date since that time and where we're going. So, we're going to go over recommendations provided in the report. Again, these will be overviews, we're not going to go through a comprehensive list, we'll be here all night if that were the case, but we're going to talk about some of the, like, the major bullet items for each of the categories that they had in the report.
One of the things that we like to talk about to frame this, so it doesn't feel so overwhelming, is that one of our basic tasks is to make sure that while we have safe, secure facilities here in the district, we're also still a welcoming place. And so, we've got to work on a balance between security and school culture, and that's sort of a task that we talk about quite often.
So, an overview of the actual report, they had various specific sections, and they're listed up here. Perimeter protection, physical security, technology and integration, policies, procedures, and protocols, staffing personnel, training and awareness, internal risk in all hazard emergency preparedness and response. So, you can see, they had a pretty good breakdown on how they've categorized these pieces, and then, obviously, within each of those subsections, they had various different items to identify. And then, at the end of the report, obviously, the top five priorities. Again, these are just some examples for each of these categories. So, perimeter protection, one of the items they identified is having exterior door review and audit. So, essentially, Brandon Fox here will be working with my department, building principals, and will conduct a review on a regular basis of looking at our perimeter protection, looking at our doors, what are things that we should be potentially working on to modify or adjust or what have you. Brandon's already started doing that during the course of the summer, and starting to see, all right, where do we have some of those potentially soft spots and what have you? So, that's one example. Another example is looking at all of our exterior entrances for possible environmental design components. What does that mean? So, what that truly means is looking at aspects of our exterior envelope, the site around that, and how we could potentially implement things such as large fixed planters that are strong enough to handle a car hitting them, but something that's still architecturally appealing to the environment that we have. Perhaps there's areas where shrubs are too tall, and you bring them down, and it still provides you that visual line of sight, but yet, you still have some stuff that's obviously looks well for our district. We don't want to create this thing to look like a prison, but we want to have that open fireman, a little bit what Brandon was talking about a little earlier as far as that culture piece and the way that we look. Physical security, primary entrances at the high school should be configured to have a controlled vestibule. I listed this one because it was probably one of their top items with physical security. So, as many of you know, our entrances at the elementary schools and middle school during the last capital project had changed, so you walk in through the exterior door, you're in a locked vestibule, you're out of the elements, but then you're able to communicate securely with the greeter station, and then once you are identified, you go through your ID badge evaluation, and you get your new sticker, then you're allowed to go into the building. The high school wasn't the case, so they suggested that we change that, because as of last year, we had open entrances at the north and main entrance. But, we changed that this year to at least take us the next step, where our doors are locked during the day, you have outside control to allow visitors to come in. The only difference is that we don't have a nice, warm vestibule for them to walk into initially. So, that'd be something that we're going to start looking at for the next capital project for that implementation to be inserted into that scope of work.
So, recommendations around staffing and personnel, the recommendation was for the district to hire two SROs. The idea behind that would be that one would start the school day at the beginning, so 7:30 for us at the high school, and then have an overlapping time so that afternoon and evening events could be covered by the second SRO. Plus, in that time where they overlap, that would allow SRO members to visit other buildings in the district, either for need or just to get to know students and staffs in other buildings. And then, they recommended that we had a more formalized threat assessment behavioral intervention team. So, we did have threat assessment teams, but they weren't as formalized as they could be, and they were building-wide, not district-wide, so they wanted us to have a more of a district-type of approach. For technologies and integration, the access controls, so making sure that we're reviewing employee IDs to make sure that they are appropriate for the buildings that they work in, and they allow them access to the places that they need to go if they need to leave their building and come to, let's say, the high school for professional development or an activity that's at the middle school. But, making sure that we're routinely visiting those, so those IDs match what they should have. And then, coming up with protocols for our PA system, so that building staff throughout each building can use the PA when needed. Right now, we have the technology to do that, but we need to put protocols in place so that teachers understand when to use it, how to use it, and what would be the format that they would follow if they had to go on and use the PA system from a different remote part in the building. And then, policies, procedures, and protocols. So, in the first bullet, we look at when are our doors locked and unlocked? So, during the school day, as Alan was just talking about, our school doors are now locked during the day, but when do our protocols align to have them open for the afternoon when we have more traffic coming in and out of the building for extracurriculars and other events coming to our school? And then, how does that work during the summer? Making sure that we're consistent throughout the buildings and we're consistent with what the building needs for the time of the year. Key control, the district to have a formalized plan that will be consistent across the district. So, making sure that when keys are issued, that we're tracking the keys to who has them, and then making sure when we have staff that are here on a temporary basis, maybe it's a long-term sub or a coach, that we're issuing the appropriate keys to them and then collecting them when their assignment is done. And then, protocols for security monitors, so examples around that would be around what protocols do they follow when visitors come to the building? And they ring that new buzzer that's out at the north door or at the main entrance, what questions should they be asking? What should they be looking for when that person comes in, so we know who's coming in and are they coming in for the right purpose? Training, staff training for security measures, so that we understand why we conduct lockdowns, lockouts, and shelter in place. One of the things I don't think we've mentioned at this point is Armada told us that we've been doing a very good job with our security measures, and their exact example in this area was, we drill very well in the school district. Where we could do a little bit better is provide training for those drills. So, we want to make sure that people understand why we're practicing the drills that we're practicing, and what should they be doing in their classrooms when they happen. And then, at some point, they suggested that we do some active training drills, so that we can look at, what would it look like if we were to work with emergency responders? Practicing evacuation drills or practicing drills that are simulation drills? And I would just want to preface that the importance there from our lens is that we would have to be well-prepared for that. You can't just jump right into a simulation drill, because you potentially will cause more harm than good. And then, internal risk, some of these are pretty straightforward, so building entrances and hallways should be monitored during special events. The same logic should apply to outside events and in the parking lot and around the buildings. We should have general training for substitutes, so that they understand if they're subbing in the building that day, and we have a lockdown drill, they understand what to do. There's been good suggestions around making those drills available and ID badges, so that when we issue them to visitors such as substitutes, they can refer to their ID badge and have it ready for them at that point. And then, have a formal plan in writing to develop for the opening and closing of school days. That was just kind of a formal piece that they talked about. Then, around hazards and emergency preparedness and response, part of my role will be to meet with each building principal to review the response plans that each building has. What we're going to look for is to make sure that they're consistent from building to building, and also that they're easy to follow when an emergency happens and people's stress levels are higher. We don't want anything that's too complicated, because then it's hard to follow those protocols. Another area where we had a very good rating is in our evacuation maps. Each map in each building is well-laid out, it's in a good place, it's very articulate, but they're different from building to building, and what we're going to look to do is build consistency. So, we want to keep that high standard, but we want them consistent in all of our buildings throughout the district. And then, the last bullet there, the exterior, that talks about the exterior windows around the buildings, that is labeling those would be for if law enforcement or emergency personnel need to respond, and they need to get to a location that is around different parts of the building, we can put the classroom numbers or letters numbers on the outside so that they understand where they need to go to for that building.
So, let's kind of like the overview of each of those little categories, a couple of those bullet items for each, just to give you a little bit of a taste here. But, we're going to focus, obviously, on the recommended top five priorities, and their first one was to designate a qualified individual that can oversee security and preparedness items. And obviously, we've filled that position with Brandon Fox in that role. The second item was the SRO piece. Obviously, that's going to be a continuization of conversation between district leadership and the Board of Education. One of the things just worth pointing out, here's the Armada folks, they identified in that study potentially two SROs, but they understand that's a significant financial impact, and just one alone is a significant impact. So, they understand that perhaps that might not be achievable, but they're recommending that you at least perhaps consider one moving forward. So, I just wanted to mention that piece here. Go ahead, Brandon, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. So, number three, the formal and consistent training related to security preparedness, that's a very large category. So, when I talked about the building emergency response plans, making sure that those are consistent from building to building, making sure that our training for faculty is consistent and done on a yearly basis. And then, that kind of plays into number four, we'll put into place training for how to manage our doors, again, like I referenced before, what questions should be asked when visitors come to the door, what are people looking for to find out when those visitors come, so we know who to let in, protocols around opening and closing of the buildings, and then for our security folks, training on de-escalation practices. So, if they have to help a student out because a student is in a crisis, what tactics should they use to de-escalate that situation so they could be most helpful to that student? And then, and their recommendations there, correcting teachers through awareness training for implementing procedures. So, we have drilled very well, but because the training hasn't been in place, they've put in their own procedures, we need to give them awareness for what those drills are for, and then make sure that we have the training in place so that they're all responding in the same way, and in a way that is safe for all staff, faculty, and students. And then, additional progress, our current progress and future plans. So, as of last Friday, we started our formal threat assessment and behavioral intervention team training. We started that with Mark Concordia out of Roberts Wesleyan. That was an eight-hour training where we had 58 members of the school district involved. That will continue this Friday, and then we will finish up on Friday, November 1st, with a slightly smaller group that will be available to put those procedures in place and make it, but we have representation from each building and then can make it consistent throughout the district.
So, the other, the next major thing is, Brandon and I, obviously, we've started looking at the report in more detail, looking at some of these line items, and it's a lot for Brandon, it absorbed fairly quickly in a short amount of period of time. But, we're starting to develop, all right, what are going to be our short-term and long-term goals? And obviously, you can tell tonight, we've already started some of the short-term goals, right? But, we've got to develop that long-range plan, and obviously, they're going to be different things, it's going to take time to develop some of these other pieces of the recommendations. Obviously, the plans will be available, and long-term items are going to be construction projects. What are going to be the aspects of that piece? And how does that dovetail into our capital project development piece? So, over the course of the next year, maybe two years, Brandon and I are going to work on that and see how much longer that'll take us to develop that, and we'll, obviously, I'm sure at some point, be presenting that to you folks on how that comes along.
So, the final piece, the training and the plans, what we're working on right now is finding the right people to consult with, and who can we bring in to help provide that training? Either Alan or I claim that we have a background and expertise in this, so we want to make sure that we bring in the right people that can provide the right training that would be helpful for our district. And we're working on meeting with folks now, so we can decide who that will be for us.
And that concludes our formal presentation. Obviously, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, did they say anything about rooftop gardens and security?
No, they did not.
Did you ask?
I did not ask.
Okay.
I've already knew.
Well, okay, I already know too, but I just thought I'd ask.
I know, I couldn't help it.
And thank you for a very concise presentation, because this is not an easy thing to talk about, and yet, it's something that we all need to hear. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Just one thing, which was, is the recommendation right for two SROs?
From Armada, correct.
Right, so, we talked about overlap, how much overlap time was suggested there?
Well, it would have to stretch from the ending of, well, the start of a school day to the ending of evening activities would be the idea. Now, that can vary. In meetings we've had with Monroe County Sheriff's Office to this point, as long as we give SROs enough lead time, we can flex their schedule by two hours. So, you know, if it's one person, we can flex it by two hours, either way, if it's two people, now you're talking about quite a span of time.
Excellent.
The whole idea was just to get enough coverage so that you have the evening pieces taken care of, and obviously, try to get somebody else out into the other mound cherries a little bit more and that sort of thing. Flexibility essentially is the, I think, the key goal in their recommendation.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Kelvin?
It sounds like they did a very thorough job. Approximately, how much did it cost? Are you liberty to share that or not?
If memory serves me correctly, I think we paid about $16,000 for their assessment.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, wasn't too bad. The pricing was very reasonable.
Mark?
When we were talking about all the training involved, and you're talking about training and other, training teachers and other staff, is there any indication of the impact it would have on our contracts with those bargaining units? I mean, is that something within the scope of other duties assigned, or is that something we have to modify next time around?
For all of our groups, not just teachers who have collective bargaining agreements, it just means that training has to happen during their collective bargaining day, right? So, if we're doing training, it would have to be during the school day, during superintendent's conference day. We typically have a couple of days with just staff in the beginning of school before students come in, so we couldn't do, we'd have to get agreement and support if we wanted to do a Saturday training or an evening training. So, as long as we're doing the training during the school day, or during conference days, or the days before school, then it's fine. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, no special accommodations, no special adjustments necessary.
Yeah, if we were to, if we were working, we have in the past done some things where we've done some training outside of, not for safety and security, but outside of the school day, then it would just, there's a plan around professional development pay for staff who are involved in training outside the school day.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Lisa?
Oh, I have a question. Yeah. I forgot what I was... Sorry. Thanks for coming, this is really helpful. I'm curious if you had some indication, because it's so large, and I feel like it's always going to be large, are they thinking not doing this five-year piece? Like, we talked, you just said, like, this is going to take a couple of years to sort of implement, like, do you think we need to be looking at this in shorter timeframe to tackle things more, like, quicker, or do you know what I'm saying?
I think so, I think we're trying, is like, is there should be evaluation to be done a little quicker? Is that what you're asking, Lisa?
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, like, this process, we talked about this when I was on Audit Committee, right? And then, we did the audit, so now, we're almost even two years out from saying, hey, we want to do this security audit, we haven't done this in a while. So, and things change so quickly, and obviously, things are happening in the community, and I'm just curious if they've said anything, or if you guys have thoughts about how we should move forward.
Well, over the course of the next, the rest of the school year, Brandon and I are going to be focusing and diving in a little bit more. Keep in mind that we're doing good right now, right? We're doing a pretty good job. I shouldn't say good, we're doing great. It's making it even better, right? So, it will take time for implementation. I think some of the easier items will happen in the first couple of years, which are going to be more on Brandon's side, for policy, procedures, training, right? Those are going to be those major, what they're saying is, best bang for your buck, if you will. When it comes to the capital project pieces, they are going to be long-term, and that's okay. Like, we just got finished with the last aspect, if you think about it, we're closing out that project now. So, by the time we're at that next five or six-year cycle, we'll be closing out that project and having the same conversation. So, I think it's okay, at least from my perspective. I think it's a good evaluation of where we're at. All right, then we take that five years to develop it out and plan it out accordingly. I think it's okay, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the group? Okay, I have a couple of quick ones. So, you were saying that you are looking into people or groups to help with the training? Are you looking locally, or do you have to go out like you did for the assessment in the first place, or is...
We did both.
Okay.
So, you know, we considered, we talked with Armada, we've talked with a group that's outside of the county, and we're talking with a group that's inside the county as well.
Okay, okay, and so, you just have your list of what you're looking for, you know what you're looking for, and you're discerning that from the people you're talking to?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I had was, you mentioned about the survey, that you did a community survey, but, okay. So, when you were saying, Brandon, about keeping the culture, the friendly, welcoming culture with the safety, do you find, and was the survey helpful in understanding how people are viewing that at this point in time or at the time of the survey? It would seem that, I'm making an assumption, that the community would say, that's okay, let's be as safe as we can, don't worry too much about the culture, you know, we want the safety, but we all feel that that cultural welcoming piece is important as well, and I was wondering if you had a sense of that.
I can answer that one, because I don't know if you delve into that unless you do.
No, not the survey piece, but I can probably add on to the...
Okay. With the survey, it didn't identify about the culture piece, there was no questions regarding to that, they were actually, they were more asking, how do you feel the district's handling? Are they handling it appropriately? Do you think there's improvement on the technology side? Do you think there should be improvement on this side? Those type of aspects of the questions, more in a broader sense. They're good results, whereas the community felt that we were doing a very good job at our safety and security processes and procedures, and they may have had their input on various smaller items. But, in a sense, the survey didn't give us a lot of information that helped us change the sway of our development of our plan, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And then, what I was thinking from your question, the feel from the community, I think it really ebbs and flows with what's going on around us.
Okay.
So, if there is a tragic event, we do get a feel of needing more, and if things have been settled for a while, and you're trying to be tight with security, you get a little pushback the other way.
Okay.
So, that's one of those ongoing balances that we'll always have our finger on the pulse for.
Which is probably really to your point, Lisa, about how often do we assess it? So, it's just a fluid situation? Yeah, okay.
I think that I can just share, when we look at this a number of times, is, and Brandon...
And then, Alan both mentioned it in terms of the bill...
And then Alan both mentioned it in terms of the building after the school day. So, we do a really, really good job during the day. Afterwards, we're, we're a community building. And so, we have a number of events taking place that aren't just athletic events or student events, but also community events, community groups coming in and using our buildings. And so, that's where you really, I always, you feel that community piece, 'cause we could just lock everything. And, and then you're gonna hear from a lot of community members who are trying to come in for the quilting club and the, and the book club. And they're using our school, which they should. It's a, it's a community building and we really wanna build that relationship with them. But, it gets tough. You know, we have Cub Scouts using our buildings in the evenings. And in my former life, I may have been a den leader. And when you go to the building and the doors are locked because of security and you've got twenty kids in the parking lot, if it wasn't me who happens to also have a badge to get myself into the building, it's those where those phone calls come in. And I think it's really important, we talked about that culture piece. It's not just our community and our adults, but it's our students. You know, there is, there is, you know, we don't want to be a place where students feel fear to come to the building because we're trying to be as safe as possible. You mentioned it, you don't want it to be a prison. It's a school. It's both to be fun and it's supposed to be engaging and enjoying. And we can do lots of things behind the scenes that really will help with security and, and make it us even more safe than we, than we can be. But, we also wanna make sure that kids aren't over anxious about coming to school. I think it's that fine line, which is why I do see the dream team of Brandon and Alan. You know, you've got the facility side, you've got the counselor side in there and, and I'm, I'm, we're really doing some great things. The training that Brandon mentioned that took place this past Friday was, was really insightful. And building these teams, these behavior intervention teams. So, K-12, you've heard me talk about our transitions is where we really are looking at for, whether it's special education or, or academics, when students go from fifth to sixth grade and then eighth grade to ninth grade. So, this opportunity of being able to talk, not just as a building, about concerns we're having and how we can support students and families in need, but then to really do that as a district level overarching is really exciting. It's, it's a powerful piece, 'cause that team isn't about consequences. That team is about how do we get support for students and family through the community organizations that we all work with. So, I'm sort of, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. We're really building something pretty, pretty exciting.
Very good. Well, thank you both for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just mention the board and, and to the community. And thanks to Brandon, I think, mentioned, a meeting with Monroe County Sheriff's Office. We have been meeting with them. We are, the boards aware from our workshop. We talked a little bit about SROs, what that may look like. So, we are looking right now and working with Monroe County Sheriff to have an additional follow-up special report with the Monroe County Sheriff, so the board can hear a little bit more specifically from the Sheriff's Office on the SRO program and be able to ask questions as well. So, I'm working with Chief Fowler now to try to make sure, we're, we're hopeful that it might be the November 5th meeting as a special report. But, I'll have more information to the board about that at the next agenda setting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that concludes special reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
Visitor speaking, can we have any questions? No, okay. Levia? Hi.
Oh, there we go. Okay. These past two weeks, students at Cobble's are continuing to practice mindfulness with their yoga and meditation. Second graders at Indian Landing made posters of their, of their own biographies about their lives, including beautiful decorations and pictures and drawings. Kindergartners at Scribner drew pictures and read stories at their outdoor campout with lots of tents after following some clues left by superkids. Students at Bay Trails from all grades participated in Bay Trail Idol and displayed all of their amazing talents. PHS, the seniors, a part of National Honor Society, helped to plan the 5K. And many students took place in the 5K and in the children's race, helping in registration, cheering and setting up and cleaning up. Unified basketball team has started and was even asked to share their, showcase their skills at the grand opening of the Galisano Training Center at Nazareth College. And were even interviewed by WXXI. And district-wide, this week is Red Ribbon Week, so schools are holding assemblies. And we have fun dress-up days to promote drug prevention awareness. Thank you.
Nice. Any questions or comments for Levia? Yeah. You guys are busy, like always.
Tomorrow's Orange, though, Unity Day. So, even though we don't have a board meeting, orange, wherever you can, show your unity, anti-bullying.
Yep, very good. Thank you, Levia.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, superintendent's reports.
Great. We have just a few reports. I've got a couple of student staff honors. And then I'll turn it over to Tom Zuber in the audience for our audit report. And then over to Mr. Pfeifer for a brief summary of our superintendent's conference day. So, first of all, most importantly, is this week is School Board Recognition Week across New York State. And this is a time to promote awareness of the important work performed by our board members. Every day, our board members take on the responsibility of overseeing the education of our district's students. We thank our board members for their dedicated leadership and education and continued service to our students, community and district. So, you have a little gift. I just, first of all, wanna thank Mrs. Irk Fitz, 'cause Dr. Putnam does not wrap or work with any sort of, I don't even know what that paper's called, my wife would know. So, but she did one, tissue paper, there you go. Yeah, I wrap. My family all knows that all my gifts get wrapped in tin foil. So, it makes a great wrapping paper, you don't need tape. But, so, thank you to Mrs. Irk Fitz for, for, for doing that. And then, what we've, we've done the last few years and we did is you all have a book in front of you. There's two books and they will be going to, so, eight books total, because we have Levia as well as our honorary board member and student rep to the board. And there's two books, one more of a primary and one intermediate. And if you open the front cover of the book, you'll see it's dedicated in your name. And that will go on the shelves of all four of our elementary schools for a long, long time. So, when students take that book out, they'll be able to see the gift of the board that goes back to the school. And so, just so people know at home, we also, we request, we requested recommendations from our elementary school librarians. And they, we're really looking at social-emotional learning as our board is supporting of in our district. So, there's two books. The more primary book is called Sweep. And it's an uplifting story about confronting big emotions. Ed's bad mood begins as something really small, hardly a thing at all. But, before long, it grows, gathers pace and spreads through the whole town. Can Ed sweep his troubles away? A wonderful bedtime story for children's age three and up. Perfect for helping children to learn, to recognize and deal with big emotions. So, I won't, I won't spoil it on whether Ed was able to get his emotions in control, so. And the other one, that's more for our immediate, you know, third, fourth, fifth grade students, is called The Class. And it's, it says, twenty kids, twenty points of view, one rambunctious, brilliant, brilliant, brilliantly conceived novel that corrals the seeming chaos into one effervescent story. And so, each chapter's from a different student's point of view. And again, really interesting, focused in on social-emotional learning. So, thank you so much for being just an incredible board to work with. And, you know, I always put that other hat on as a parent in this district, long before I took this role as superintendent. And I, I feel honored and blessed to send my kids to Penfield Schools every day. And it's because of the leadership of this board, the fact that you're the only board I know in New York State that has a goal focused on developing the whole student and now tying it back into social-emotional learning and making that not just a conversation piece, but a goal for the district from, right from the top of the Board of Education just means a lot. And I think it's a great reminder to work in a district every day, that test scores, of course, are important and achievement is important. But, without really building that social-emotional foundation for our students, the rest of it doesn't really matter. And so, I think that hand-in-hand academics and social-emotional learning is just really exciting. And then, because the books are great, but you've gotta give them back to go to the library, you've got a little treat bag there with some fortune cookies and the, a little, a little tag on there, Catherine. If you could just read the tag.
We are very fortunate to work with such dedicated board members. Thank you for your service.
Yep. And for fun, when you open your fortunes, you have to end with, "At a board meeting." And then you'll really know. We, we may have tried that before we came tonight with a couple of them. And, and hopefully, they, hopefully, they weren't real fortunes, 'cause we're gonna be here a long time. So, again, just thank you very, very much on behalf of the entire district, this team that's here every night and Nancy Bradstreet in the audience, as well as, as Alan and Bill Maloney. And just thank you very much for everything that you do for our students.
Thank you. Can I just say that on behalf of the board, we're very appreciative of the books. It's a lovely, it's a lovely sentiment. And it's just nice to know that they'll be here for a long time.
Yeah.
It's really a lovely gesture. I very much appreciate it. I'm sure everybody here on the board appreciates that. Thank you. And thanks for the kind words, it's very lovely to hear.
Absolutely. And if anybody gets, if it comes up, if you're really interested in reading that book, you can take it with you and just bring it back at the next board meeting or drop it off at district office. But, if you're really interested in reading the book, the library can wait a little bit. If you, if you, absolutely.
Nice, that's nice, okay. But, not today, 'cause it's raining.
Right, it's raining. Alright, so, thank you again to the board.
Nourishing all those plants.
To shift gears a little bit, the Penfield Education Foundation 5K. Levia mentioned our incredible students that worked. Got there bright and early in the morning and worked, and just a couple of pictures there. We had more than three hundred participants. We had over a hundred staff members registered for the walk this past October thirteenth. And this is our third time the foundation's put on this 5K. Harris Hill has always won for the highest participation, but Cobble's edged them out this year. And so, there's a big trophy the foundation bought and that'll be picked up from Harris Hill. We'll add the Cobble's name, two thousand nineteen, on and it'll go to Cobble's for a year until the next 5K. And Penfield families had a great time on a slightly chilly, but then sunny morning. I was there, it really was a great time. It was a great reminder. I talked about it at the last meeting, I think, homecoming and how homecoming felt like a, really a K-12 community event. And I think I looked to a couple of board members who were there. I, I, I think the 5K felt the same way. It was just a lot, our children's fun run at the end was so much fun. They just, so you know, it's not a race, it's a timed event, so they run for five minutes. And so, it's not about who wins, who loses. It's just about, everybody gets a coupon for a McFlurry. So, that was exciting. And a medal, and a medal. So, it was, it was worth it. And again, just thanks to all of our sponsors on behalf of the foundation, the I'd Family Dealership and SEI, who you know are architect and campus construction, and Family First, we're all, many, many sponsors. Those were our, our four real big ones, but I, I'm too much to list. But, if you go to the Penfield Education Foundation website, you can see everybody that came out to support the race. And if you go to our Facebook page, there are hundreds of pictures of race day, I think. So, pretty fun to watch. Speaking of that, based on this 5K, it's the, the one big fundraiser for the foundation. And this is the first year, after three years of building, that the Penfield Education Foundation did a grant application for staff and clubs across the district. I did email this out earlier to the board for their review. But, the foundation is really excited to be approving their first round of grant applications. And there's ten applications ranging from about eleven hundred dollars down to a hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But, every school, Scribner's somewhere in there, I think something's getting shared with Scribner as well. But, we really had, tried to get as many schools in there as well. But, just lots of different things in terms of different types of seating and the library and science classes. And all these things are what I refer to as the nice-to-haves. You know, this board's been so supportive over the past that if it's an essential to have in the classroom and you need it for the curriculum, then the district should, should pick up the tab for that. But, everything else is really a nice-to-have and that's what the foundation wants to fill the void. And then, I think, yes, I, yes, oh, Barb has a question. Yes.
No comment?
Yes.
So, the fourth grade got raised garden beds, soil and plants?
Yes.
Couldn't be a rooftop garden?
Yeah. This is a rooftop garden theme, a grant.
I'm gonna go for a grant now. I'm gonna go for the grant.
And just, you know, we do the same thing for sports boosters. It's a process where, you know, I provide to the board ahead of time the grants. And then, if there's any questions, we work through them before they come to the meeting for presentation. But, it just, it is, Alan's in the audience, so I wanna thank Alan McNiff, our director of facilities, 'cause anything that has to do with facilities, I run through Alan to make sure that we don't, that anybody, whether it's the foundation, whether it's sports boosters, that we're not buying things that ultimately become a cost to the district. And so, the raised flower beds, Alan will work with where the best place for those to go. If they are looking at doing any planting on the ground, then we want Alan there to make sure that there's safety in terms of other wires or anything like that. So, but he's very, very supportive around that work. And same with Ed Turkowski, who's not here tonight, but anything technology-related, software-related, we run by Ed to make sure that, again, that we get a great gift from a foundation or a boosters club, but then it doesn't wanna turn into a, then, an ongoing district cost. So, thank you very much on behalf of the foundation. And that concludes my staff and student honors. And I'll turn it over to, we have Thomas Zuber for our audit report presentation. So, Tom, if you wanna come up?
Good evening.
Hi.
Is it on? Yes, alright, very good. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. As you know, I've been a partner with the firm for over twenty-five years. And I'm here to just present a brief summary of the two thousand nineteen audited financial statements for the school district. I believe in your board packets, you had copies of the basic financial statements, the internal control communication and executive summary that we talked about during our audit committee. And, and both Ray Wagler and I met with the audit committee last week. And we spent quite a bit of time with the audit committee. You know, the, the, the financial statements, it's about a sixty-two-page document. So, there's a lot of really good information in there. There's our audit opinion, there's the, the management discussion and analysis. There is a discussion about corporate-style financial statements, there's your operating statements. So, there's a lot of real good information in there. And we reviewed a lot of that information with the audit committee. Again, we spent about an hour with the audit committee talking about the, the financial statements. Again, we talked about budget variances, we talked about year-over-year variances, we talked about fund balances and reserves, internal controls, checks and balances. So, we, we had a very, very good discussion. And the financial statements really are the results of a budget process that you started more than a year ago, more than a year and a half ago, actually. So, again, it really tells the story of that budget process. And I'm pleased to report that the district continues to be in very good financial condition. You're doing a very good job. When we look at financial condition, we're really looking at, how's the district handling your, your fund balance, your reserves, the long-term planning that the district does? And again, you're doing a very good job overall. Your, your equities, your fund balances went up about one point four million dollars. You're, you're developing and utilizing your reserve accounts as part of your budget process. The board utilized about two point one million dollars in reserves and fund balance. And at the end of the year, the board made a decision to refund some of those reserves. And, and really, some of the more important or, or more beneficial reserves that are out there are the capital reserves. And in fact, the district has about twenty-one million dollars in capital reserves. And again, more restrictive because it's the voters, the community, that are allowing the school district to create those reserves. And then, it's the voters, the community that authorized the district to utilize those reserves. And again, very beneficial from the long-term plan, because it really, they're used to help fund the local portion of a project, okay? To really help offset any of those spikes as a result of those large projects. So, again, very, very beneficial. And the district really does an excellent job in monitoring and, and, and looking at those reserve accounts. So, again, very positive. A couple of the other areas, the district did make some decisions to allocate some one-time funding over to your capital projects. In lieu of issuing that for the two thousand nineteen capital project. In addition, moving some money over for the Bosse's capital project. So, again, looking forward to things that can impact the school district and really making some very positive decisions. So, again, very excellent in terms of your, your financial position. So, overall, we had a good discussion on, on the, the school district finances. We also talked a little bit about internal control, checks and balances. And, and again, we issued an internal control communication. Again, no significant deficiencies and material weaknesses, that's very positive. A few procedural recommendations the district to consider. But, overall, the district's doing a very good job. A few items that the district reacted to from last year. So, again, from the audit side, a very So, again, from the audit side, very positive results. The district continues to be in good financial condition. You're developing and utilizing your reserve funds consistent with your long-term plan. So very, very good report. Okay.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for coming tonight, Thomas. We appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Pfeifer to give us a brief summary of our superintendent's conference day.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. As the board is aware, on the 11th, we had our superintendent's conference day. And we planned for professional development for nearly 480 teachers and almost 100 teaching assistants, as well as our nearly 30-plus administrators for that day. So, it's quite an undertaking. It was a huge team event for the entire Office of Instruction. And I really have to highlight the work of, of our new assistant director of professional learning, Jason DiLaRenta. He did an outstanding job facilitating, planning, organizing, setting up rooms, making sure folks had contacts and everything that they needed, working through the process with the administrators to make sure everybody signed up for the activities that they needed to be in. And it was really a great format. We offered nine different sessions, all aligned to our social, emotional health and wellbeing action plan. Teachers were, and TAs were required to attend at least a three-hour session. In some cases, there were longer sessions. We had a presenter in Val Brown from Teaching Tolerance through the Southern Poverty Law Center who came in, and that was a full six-hour day for those teachers because that, that workshop is designed as six hours, and we're not, they won't break it up. And so we worked with the high school and the PEA to say, okay, we will keep people in a full six-hour workshop on, in the October day, but then they'll have the freedom to work collaboratively with their departments or teams for the January day. And then we have the other group in that didn't attend from the high school coming in on the January day. And then we'll roll through Bay Trail with that workshop, and then our elementary schools over the next couple of years. Another guest presenter that we had was Deb Salamon from Coordinated Care Services. You might recognize that name from our work with TIG. She was in to present on trauma-informed teaching, so that was another three-hour workshop that you, that we offered. And all of our other workshops that were offered here were all presented by Penfield staff. So restorative practices overview was presented by Melissa Green, a school social worker here at the high school. Executive functioning was Jessica Dalton, our part-time school psychologist and behavioral specialist at Bay Trail, district-wide behavioral specialist. Cultural sensitivity with Jennifer Pavone, Jordan Garberino here at the high school. Mindfulness by Kelsey Ferante, who is a counselor at the middle school. Rethinking homework with Sheena Conway, our humanities TOSA. And zeros, averages, and retakes, which those last two topics are associated with standards-based grading, the work that we did with Rick Normandy over the summer, was delivered by Jason DiLaRenta. And I delivered a three-hour session on the social, emotional learning signature practices for our staff, and had about 21 folks who decided to spend their morning with me, which is very nice. I only had four sign up for my afternoon session. That was a little bit of a blow to my ego when I had to cancel, but good reviews for the one I held in the morning, so maybe in January I'll be able to fill both sessions. But so far, we sent out our, our usual survey to all staff. As of about, maybe it was Friday, we had about 250 responses, four out of five-star rating. So positive comments and suggestions, some suggestions on how to make the sessions better. But overall, it was really an outstanding day of learning, where teachers got a balance between professional development and the opportunities to work in their teams or departments and continue to collaborate and move things forward. So, again, a great day, and many thanks to the team for, and everybody who presented. It was great to have the in-house presenters there and helping us move our initiative forwards with the social, emotional learning and action plan. We're looking to replicate those sessions in January, as well as bringing the Children's Institute to offer a few of the sessions that we ran over the summer, so that we'll have even more options, but, and continue to support our SEL efforts.
Board members, any questions or comments? I understand. Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I was at the Bay Trail PTA this week, and a few people spoke very highly of the, there was an administrator there, and the teacher, Lee Asan, spoke very highly of the professional development day, and seemed very excited to share it with the PTA and parents at the meeting, so.
Excellent, great, thank you.
It was cool. Sorry.
What, what I was gonna say is, there were options this time around, right? And that went over really well.
Yep. Yeah, with the exception of the, the high school and the, the social justice, because we had to kind of schedule that, and the high school's very careful to try and work around Regents exams in January and pick the departments that we're gonna attend this time of year versus who's gonna attend in January. There wasn't much choice with them. But for, once we get through January, then they will have the choices between these other options as well. People could self-select the administrators if they knew there was something they wanted a staff member to maybe learn something about, might have suggested that they maybe look at these options. But it really was self-selected in terms of which they were gonna have. The only other exception to that would be PE had to get in the required CPR and AED. So they spent their day doing that, but they'll get back into the fold here when we get into January.
So it seems to all balance out.
We're trying to.
That's great.
We're trying to.
Nice. Any other? Barb?
We did not offer anything on rooftop gardens, Barb.
Had you, had, had you offered it, perhaps you would have had more than four people takers in here.
Maybe, but I don't know anything about rooftop gardens.
But that's not what I was going, that's not what I was gonna say. What I was gonna ask you was about your support staff.
Okay.
Support staff, were they able to make their own choices, or did, were they?
The teaching assistants?
No, the, your, what, okay, what are we, what are your related services? What are your speech people? What are your?
Oh, speech, yes. Yes, our SLPs, yeah, they were able to self-select sessions.
Okay, thank you.
There, there, it's always interesting, but, but our counselors, our speech language, it really fall under faculty. So when we do such PD pieces, they're, they're involved faculty. But like Jim was referencing, our teaching assistants were also, they, many of them chose to go with their, sort of the teacher that they worked with, to different, different things.
Just curious, like, is there ever an opportunity, say, for your speech-language people? Because they also have to do professional development. Is this something that they could claim towards their certification hours?
I don't know. I'd have to look at that and, and see if that works toward their specific licensing as opposed to CTELE. I'm not quite sure. But we look to help them with, out with other opportunities and conferences as those become available to help them maintain those hours as well.
To me, what you offered certainly was under the realm of other for the speech-language people, and.
I would have to talk to Barb to make sure, but she would probably be the better expert in that than I.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Barb.
Problem, very well, thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Alright. I have Asan Financial Items, is that, okay. Audit reports. Yep. As a result of recent federal program changes, the district documents, wait a minute, did I? Oh, I'm sorry, I started in the wrong place there. Yeah. Okay, will you just? Just do this one, okay, thank you. The agenda item is the board's acceptance of the audit report and management letter for the 2018-19 school year. Right, for last year, right?
Right.
Okay. The agenda item contains the corrective action plan for the three comments included in the management letter. The audit, the management letter, and the corrective action plan have been reviewed and approved by the district's, district's audit committee and have been provided to the board. Tonight, we heard a presentation from the auditors, and the board has had an opportunity to ask questions. If there are no further questions, may I have a motion and a second that the audit by Ray Wagler, CPA PC of the district's quote "basic financial statements", quote, and the associated management letter for the year ended June 30th, 2019 be accepted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Emily's second in that one. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Revised contract with Sylvan Learning Center. The district is contracting with Sylvan Learning Center to provide supplemental educational services on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy. The contract is not to exceed $28,662.84 and will be paid through Title I funding. Students will receive Sylvan's services at Our Lady of Mercy and at the Sylvan retail locations. The program includes diagnostic assessments, guided instruction, and progress updates that will be available to parents, teachers, and the Our Lady of Mercy administration. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Sylvan Learning Center on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay. Per Commissioner's regulations, it is necessary to readapt the Penfield Audit Committee charter each year. The charter was adopted by the committee at their October 17th, 2019 meeting. The charter was given to the Board of Education prior to this meeting for review. May I have a motion and a second that the Penfield Audit Committee charter be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, well, I have a comment. I noticed that in the wording, under "composition and requisite skills", there is reference to the board, let me just read it. The board will annually approve, annually appoint three of its members to the committee. Two board members will serve as voting members, and the third will serve as an alternate. At the first meeting of each year, the appointed board members will designate the voting members and the alternate. The alternate will attend all meetings of the committee, but will only vote when one of the voting members is absent. That is different than our practice. And so we have to change the charter to coincide with our practice. So, the next audit committee meeting is on January 23rd. At that meeting, the committee members can review this and adopt the revised charter. So therefore, I move that we postpone this matter until the February 4th board meeting. We have a motion, and I, and I need a second, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay, policies for first read. Dr. Putnam?
Just wanted to commend the board for using Robert's Rule of Order there for the postponement of that, of that approval. Nice job.
May I thank our district clerk?
Yeah, nice job, district clerk. So for, we have some policies for first read, and also policies for second read and approval. The policies for first read, I just want to give an overview first. I think I may have mentioned this before, but we have two newer board members, and a reminder for our other board members and anybody watching in the community. It's that a few years ago, Sharon, our district clerk, attended a conference with an attorney that talked about policy. I also spoke with an attorney at a conference I went to. And it's, it's sort of semantics, but they really encouraged boards to, to look at removing the word "ensure" from, from policy, because there's a feeling that when you say you're insuring something, you're guaranteeing it's gonna happen. And when you talk about oversight and ensuring things, it's, you can't always ensure that something's gonna happen. So just this really a semantics or a language piece. But this board, through Policy Committee, has been, every time a policy comes up with the word "ensure", we review it. Sometimes we leave it, especially if it's coming from state law, federal law. We may not change all of them. So, when we look at these policies, the first one is the use of surveillance cameras in school buildings. We did substitute a couple times a new language for the word "ensure". We removed an introductory clause from the board authorization sentence. The reason being that that language in there was there when this policy was first created, and it's been so long, and surveillance cameras have been in all of our buildings and in our buses. We do have already some comments. Calvin Freeler, our board member, made some additional comments, and they will, per process, be brought back to the Policy Committee at our next meeting to review. And then there's also regulation that goes with that policy. Actually, it's regulation that goes with the surveillance cameras, both in school and transportation vehicles. We substituted some new language for the word "ensure", and we added a sentence allowing camera recordings to be made available to law enforcement or the Office of Children and Family Services, which is a legal piece we have to anyway, but we put it in policy to make sure people are aware of that. That language also was in, is in our cameras, in the school buses. And so we want to make sure that, sorry, it's in the building. We want to make sure that it was also covered for transportation. 57-52 policy is transportation inter-district. We changed, what we have been doing is changing the word "pupils" to "students", and we've removed a sentence restricting the district to schedule an additional bus run. And that's, if you look through the policy, the cross-out, that, that'll make sense. And then there's a regulation we made some changes to, which is the drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety-sensitive employees, which are all, there's law that oversees that, but we did remove the word "ensure" within that policy. And again, these policies for first read are all up online. The community can go and take a look under Policies Under Review, and you'll see the strikeout and, and changes when appropriate. That's first read. And then second read and approval are our policies around Board of Education meetings. A new draft, a new policy on non-discrimination and anti-harassment in the district. An update policy based on the new law around immunization of students, as well as the regulation and forms that go along with that. And then what I refer to as the Simon policy, but our policy on therapy dogs in schools, which last year was a pilot, and now is on the second read as a formal policy, not a pilot policy any longer.
Okay, thank you. Alright, may I have a motion and a second that the above policies, the one second read, that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Alright. Alright, our MCSBA committee meetings, we had information exchange this past week, so.
We did.
Well, we did.
We did.
Didn't we?
We did, it was, it was lovely.
So, care to share?
Maybe. I'm trying, okay, yes.
There you go.
So, this week's theme was mental health partnerships in school. So Tom and I felt very well-versed in this, because I think we in Penfield are really doing a super job. So that was really cool, to see that we're kind of on the forefront of doing some of those things, and have been for a couple of years. So, there wasn't a lot of new information, I didn't think, but I think we talked a little bit about, they, one of the districts presented was, I forget, Brockport?
Brockport, yes.
Brockport, and how that, that they're collecting data around that. And then, so we sort of had a little discussion about how would we collect data about what we're doing here to make sure it's successful, and, so, yeah.
So that was, the piece too, that it was one of the people from Rochester Regional Health, Bill Pearson, who happens to also be a Penfield resident. And Penfield, Bay Trail, and the high school has, had utilized Rochester Regional Health for the last couple of years, which was, they brought in outside therapists, and students could meet with them during the school day, and it would be billed through family's insurance. And, and they, I think they did a very nice job, but based on recommendations from our mental health teams at Bay Trail and the high school, we decided to look in a different direction this year, and we're building that partnership now with the Villa of Hope, which was one of the organizations that was shared with. And so that's still sort of getting put into place at the high school and Bay Trail. But I agree with Lisa that it is nice to go to things like information exchange or conferences, and you hear what, what other districts haven't even started looking at yet. And we're saying, okay, we've been doing this for a couple of years, and can it get better? Absolutely, we're always looking at making things better. But in terms of partnering with outside organizations, I think it's really helpful, so.
Nice, that's nice.
Yep.
Very good, thank you. And that was the only one for that this week, okay. So we had the district community committee meetings, we had audit and health and safety. Audit, well, we went through the whole thing. Any, anything to add?
It was my first meeting.
Oh, and?
Nice, I, I.
And you'll go back, right?
I'll go back.
Alright, then I would say it's a success. Okay, and health and safety, Tom or Calvin?
It was a good meeting. I would say it was very comprehensive, what we talked about.
Okay, Tom?
Now, we, um, it was, well, first of all, I'll just mention that poor Mr. Yeager, he, he's on both audit and health and safety. So, so, so we, we stuck him in the basement room with, with the audit committee, but thank you for that.
No, that was some.
It was, yeah, it was, our, our nurses talked a lot about just sort of things they're seeing in the buildings, and talked a little bit about immunizations and how that process is going. We had a healthy conversation about Gaga- is going. We had a healthy conversation about Gaga Ball, because it is a game that kids love. But some of the courts, Alan was there to talk a little bit about what they're doing to try to make them as safe as possible. Having two boys in middle school, they talk about Gaga knuckles, because if you're trying to hit the ball, you can rub your knuckles on the ground. So, they're working on doing some things to make sure our Gaga Ball pits are safe. And then, Brandon was there for his first health and safety committee to talk a little bit about the training that we've just started around the behavior intervention team. So, all in all, I think a good meeting.
Sounds like everyone's been busy.
It's been a little busy.
Love it. All right. Well, thank you for all of that. All right. We have our NISBA convention coming up, starting Thursday through Saturday. I understand six will be going, six of us will be going. Okay. Emily and Bill, were you able to take Friday off, or were you, oh, nice.
I'm set for Thursday and Friday.
Nice. Very good. Okay, great. Okay. And it says here, please check your email. All right. Registration barcode and badge review were sent to each registrant. They're going to be sending them out to your emails on Monday. If you don't have it by the end of the day on Monday, if you could let me know.
Well, yesterday was Monday.
No, Monday. It's coming Monday.
The conferences this weekend.
Oh, yeah. Yesterday. Did you get them yesterday?
I didn't see them.
You're supposed to get the ID ba, like the little barcode that you can print off to your email.
I looked in my email today.
Check your junk email, maybe it went to junk.
Oh, it, no, it could be. All right.
I do know when you go somewhere to like New York, is they, they'll still register you. They, you just have to go in and type your name in in the computer. But makes it easier if you have the barcode that you can print off.
Thank you so much. It's in junk mail?
Who is it for? Is it Stacy?
Oh, yeah, it is in junk.
Stacy Swallow.
All right. Thank you for that suggestion. For the meeting, Emily. I'm not knowing what a day it is. It's okay. It's all right. Okay, so, Bill, were you able, were you able to go last year?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, it's not new to you, but Emily, new to you. Well, it's nice that, my first year on the board, it was, it was in Rochester as well. So, that's nice. All right, good.
I'll just, can I mention, because I have you all here, is that one of the nice things about Rochester is the cost is far less for the district to attend. So, as board members and myself who is attending, the only thing you get reimbursed for is parking. So, if you do have to park, if you save your parking receipt, you'll, the district will be able to reimburse parking at the conference. But you don't get like a per diem for food or anything, because you don't, because, you got to bring your lunch. If you find me, I will buy you a hot dog on the road somewhere.
Well, where do we even go to lunch down there?
Are there any rooftop gardens we can have lunch at?
There is a rooftop. There is a rooftop at, there's a hotel right down, I won't say the name, but there's a hotel right down on East Avenue with a rooftop garden.
Lavia would like to come.
All right, perfect. But as a reminder, in all, in all reality, the, I don't know who's going to be speaking because our commissioner has retired, and our Philin commissioner has also stepped away. But whoever's presenting for the commissioner, they are being opened, the opening is our Penfield Jazz Band. So, that'd be great to be there. And when you're at the, I don't know if it's referred to as the marketplace of ideas, but when you're at the floor walking around with all the booths, please keep an eye out for those camouflage pants, because our Penfield Robotics team will be there demonstrating the robot. So, pretty cool. Make sure you definitely look out for some Penfield kids, which is a real perk of having it so close to home that we can celebrate.
That is nice. Yeah, for sure. All right. Well, then, there being no further business, may I have a motion and a second? Hold on. That the, oh, wait, let me, excuse me. Let me back up. I like to do the upcoming meetings first. We have November 5th is our Board of Education meeting, the next board meeting right here at the high school at 7:00. And on November 7th is the next policy committee meeting. Okay. Now, may I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:15 PM?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you.